We want to do the roll call, make sure everybody can hear.
Yeah, I get to, I got to read my script.
Okay.
So as a preliminary matter, this is Adam Burney. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matthew Allison.
Affirmative.
Tanner Cole.
Affirmative.
Paula Bertram.
Affirmative.
Matthew Brenner.
Affirmative.
And I am staff and I am here. I see. Brian Marchetti, who is our, is one of the members that will be here. Brian, you can hear me?
Yes.
Jacqueline, you can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. And. That looks like everyone. So. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 30A, section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not, does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. If you're using a smartphone, tablet, or computer, you can go to zoom.us and enter the meeting number. Or if you are unable to do that, you can call 888-475-4499. The meeting number for this meeting is 840-729-13364. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And that to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are now turning to the first agenda item. Before we do so, permit me to cover the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business. And to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute yourself when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For all response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. At for public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of public commenters. So that's generally not how we, we do it. Please just state your name and address as the chair calls on you. There is a raise hand function. You can find it under the participants page. If you open that, you can raise your hand and I will direct the chair that there is someone with their hand raised. I believe there is a function on the phone for folks to raise hands. And if that. Is necessary, please do so. I believe it's pressing nine, but I'm not definitively sure. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to the chair for our first agenda item, which is board reorganization.
Good evening. First item on my agenda is call to order. We've already done that, I suppose. So we're all here. All the apparently sworn in members are here, four of us. So board reorganization. We've done it multiple ways, different times, for different reasons. We are, we are a five-member group. We do have five positions filled, but we are still not sure whether the fifth member has been sworn in. We can go ahead and reorganize right now, tonight, or we can wait for that fifth member. I would like to ask each individual member how they feel about it, either do it tonight or wait. Does that sound reasonable, Adam?
Yeah, I would. Note that it would probably be best to organize at least the officers. And if you need to put off the other items to a future date, that might be a way to do it. I don't know that. But I guess that's up to you.
Okay, well, we really only have three office positions. There's chair, vice chair, and member. I mean, I'm sorry, clerk. So. Okay, why don't we just go ahead and we'll, we'll do the reorganization for the three positions and then.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would question why we need to do the reorganization tonight. I think it makes sense. We now have a full, full board and personally, I would like to wait. I certainly would like to wait on the committee appointments. But I'd also like to wait on the officers. I'm not quite sure what the catalyst would be to have to do it tonight.
Adam, can you respond to that?
There's no catalyst. It generally is done the first meeting after the election. This is our second meeting after the election. I hate to keep putting it off. I don't know that it makes any legal difference.
Personally, I would like to confirm with the additional member that they'll, will be in attendance at our next meeting. And if that's the case, then I would like to wait. That's just my personal opinion.
I'm not sure we'll be able to get a response immediately, but. Okay, so Mr. Cole, how do you feel about it?
You muted yourself, Tanner.
How's that?
Better.
The only. Is I'm currently the board's representative on the TCP BDC. Their next meeting is July 29th. So essentially, we, I don't know if I should, we meet on the 27th, I believe. So that's on my radar that. Or I would like to attend if I still hold the position or whatever. Because they do have some business going on right now in terms of getting. Plans engineered and so on. No. Can't wait because that meeting is at our next meeting, so.
So are you for or against doing it now rather than waiting?
Out there, is any other boards or committees that we have representatives on that may be meeting in the meantime? And knowing that if we do choose to. We really need to make sure we put somebody in that. There is a meeting.
I would say that anyone who's currently sitting would, would stay until new appointments were made. And if that changes after that point, then it would be a matter of catching up if possible. But if, for whatever reason, they don't do, you don't do it at the next meeting, I would say you are still a member of that committee until there's a vote otherwise.
Okay. Sounds good. I would agree. So I'm, I'm in favor of having all five members present. And Paula, it sounds like she is. And it sounds like Tanner, his, his quantity was resolved by Adam?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Mr. Brenner, how do you feel about this?
I'm in favor of having all five members present.
Excellent. I think then it's an agreement that we will table the reorganization until the next meeting.
And we will put that on for that agenda item.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So now typically, our second agenda item is public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that has a public comment not to do with anything on the agenda this evening? Any hands?
I have a hand raised.
Please state your name and address.
The. Individual on the phone. Oh, this is Eric.
Yes, I was, I was trying to raise my hand, but it wouldn't work. So I apologize. But I am here. I heard you guys saying that you wish that I was here. I was sworn in earlier this afternoon. And I'm all set, ready to go.
Okay.
Awesome.
A bing. I guess we'll back up then to the second item. Board reorganization. Okay, so how this works, especially for new members, is there, we'll take a nomination. We'll start with chair, then we'll move to vice chair, then we'll move to clerk. And we'll take nominations. And they'll need to be second. And then I'll ask if there are any other nominations. And then I think that's how we go. Get all the nominations first and then we vote.
Yep.
If there's more than one nomination, then if you want the first one that gets the call vote, then you say aye. And if you don't, you don't reply.
Correct. You're only allowed to endorse a single, a single nominee.
All right. So I am, I am the chair currently, and I don't have a problem with continuing the chair. And I don't have a problem with sharing the position. If anybody else feels that they would like to, to do that. So there are nominations for chair. Is everybody unmuted?
Yes.
I would nominate Matthew, Matthew Allison for chair.
Is there? Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay. Seeing only one nomination for chair, I'll do the roll call vote. All in favor of Matthew Allison as the chair, please signal by saying aye. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Excellent. Did I get your name correct? Torgerson?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Now we'll move on to vice chair. I'll take nominations for vice chair.
I would nominate Tanner Cole as vice chair.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Excellent. Are there any other nominees for vice chair? Seeing none, having only one nomination, again, we'll roll call vote. All in favor of Tanner Cole for vice chair. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Excellent. Moving on to the third position, which I believe is currently vacant.
No, I am currently serving in that role.
Oh, you're listed as member on my header. That's all right. I'm sorry. I apologize. So I will take nominations for the clerk.
I nominate Paula Bertram for clerk.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. Are there any other nominations for clerk? Seeing none, or hearing none. All in favor of Ms. Bertram as clerk? Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Ms. Torgerson?
Aye.
Excellent. So since we all, all are here. We, do we all have the plan, planning board reorganization chart in front of us? It was, it was in our packet from today? Okay, that'll, that'll help clarify the, the dates and times and places that they meet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There are a couple incorrect entries on that form.
Okay, let us know.
The MRPC meets the first Thursday of the month at seven.
First Thursday.
I believe MRPC and MJTC are flipped.
No, 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 that's, the MPO, which isn't on here, is, oh, you're right. MJTC and MRPC are flipped. You're correct. And then MPO is not on here.
We don't have an MPO representative.
But we should have, but we should have, correct?
No, not the planning board.
Okay.
That's the board of selectmen.
Okay, my understanding was we had two representatives, so we might want to investigate that.
I believe that they're both from the board of selectmen, one selectman and one selectman appointee. If I, if I remember correctly, there's two for MRPC, one planning board, one selectman. And MJTC has a, a planning board and a selectman, but I don't believe the planning board has anything to do with MPO because that's an executive level.
I was, I served on the MPO for several years and they were members of, from other communities from planning boards. So you might want to check into that. We don't.
I will check into that. We've never appointed, we, we have not appointed anyone to the MPO from the planning board in the time I've been here.
I, I know we haven't, but if we have an opening there, that is a very important board because that's where the funding is decided as to what projects will be funded in the region. So if we do have an opportunity to appoint someone, we should definitely consider that. So if you could look into it, that would be great. But just for everyone, MRPC and MJTC are flipped.
Okay. So just to repeat, the, the first and the second appointments, the bottom line go with the other appointment.
Right.
Okay. So I don't know, do we want to go through and give a brief description of each before we start asking? Or, or willing and nominate?
Sure. So MRPC is the Regional Planning Commission. They do regional studies and operate as a contractor for communities to obtain services from another governmental entity. Excuse me, serving on that, you would hear what they're up to. You'd have education opportunities monthly. Even if you're not a member, you can go to the meetings. And you would work on driving the direction of that group through discussions and funding at those meetings. MJTC is an advisory committee to the MPO made up of a variety of stakeholders and they help review and make recommendations up to the MPO from a community standpoint on the funding that the MPO approves and distributes, as well as potentially bringing projects forward. Capital Planning is a local fiduciary group that looks at capital projects which are a life of five years and a value of more than $10,000. And they make recommendations to the board of selectmen and town meeting on what items to fund. Open Space Ad Hoc Committee just recently finished operating an open space plan. And some members of that were part of a acquisition team that purchased the 300 acres over on Northfield Road. They will probably be looking in the next, I'll say seven years, but over the next year to start implementing some matters from within the open space plan. So in theory, it should be a little more moving stuff forward than, than putting a plan together. That committee doesn't have a regular meeting, so they would meet as needed. They also review applications for removal from chapter land. So if you have, if you're in the chapter 61 program, whether it's agriculture, forestry, or recreation, and you want to remove that before the time is up, you would apply to the town and that group has a series of standards that they use to make recommendations to the selectmen. Stormwater Task Force is a group that is charged with working to ensure that the town is in compliance with the EPA Phase Two small municipal separate storm sewer permit that is issued as a blanket permit to the, the state of Massachusetts. Much of this work is, is done on the staff level because it involves day-to-day operational stuff through the DPW. We'll talk about a stormwater bylaw later that is part of that work. A lot of what they do is education and outreach and working with the consultant to ensure that the work is, is meeting those standards. The TCP Building Design Committee, the town allocated, is it around 200,000? To do a preliminary design and cost estimate for converting the TC Passio's former elementary school to a town hall building or a town offices building, which would include, if I'm not mistaken, both the cable and the school department. They're currently working with an architect to wrap this phase of the project up for a fall town meeting, if I'm not mistaken. And then that committee would probably continue on based, if the, the project was moved forward into a, a full design and construction phase. And the Agricultural Commission Liaison essentially just goes to the ag comm. Excuse me, meetings, they're not a, a member. They go and participate as a, as a representative that brings information back from the ag com to the planning board that the planning board may find relevant.
Thank you for that. That was very descriptive. And then we don't, we don't have somebody appointed to MRPC or MJTC, and I forget which one.
We don't have one either right now.
MRPC, I'm currently appointed.
Oh, are you?
Um, and I attend the meetings. I am more than happy to hand that over.
Okay, and then the MJTC is currently not taken by anybody.
Correct.
Myself, I'm on capital planning. I'm on stormwater task force. And I am, I am an appointed member of the Agricultural Commission now. So. And for full disclosure, the capital planning appointment is, as far as, as far as our town, town report says, it's a three-year position. And this is my third year that I've been in it. I, I enjoy going to the meetings. They're. It's a short. I wouldn't mind passing any of them off. The Agricultural Commission, I am still going to be a member, so. And then Tanner is currently the TCP Building Design Committee representative?
Yes. And I am currently the open space representative.
I'm sorry, yes, that's, I did.
And I would like to retain that position. I've been involved in land acquisition for a long time as well as open space. But I, so currently I serve on the MRPC and the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee. I would have no problem with, if someone else wanted to take MRPC, I would like to, if at all possible, retain the open space position.
All right. For the, for the two new members, was there anything that stood out that interested you, Mr. Brenner?
I'm willing to take on just about anything right now. I am very open and it all sounds very interesting to me, to be frank. So if Ms. Bertram is looking to step away from MRPC, I would be interested in that. There's some others that are interested, that are interesting to me as well, but people with experience have said that they'd like to continue on there and I can see a value in keeping people with experience in those roles.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Torgerson?
As much as I would like to take something else on, this is my first day. And I would like, before I said yes to anything, I would like a pretty solid recap on exactly what goes on before I make my decision.
It's an honest answer. And it's not uncommon for new members to not immediately take on a second position for their first year. It's not uncommon.
Okay.
The, the, this planning board, it, it takes, it takes a little bit to get used to it. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that you really need to have some background on to be able to actively or productively participate. And, and we welcome participation. And I do expect you to have plenty of questions that we can readily answer. And please ask questions if you don't understand anything for the two new members. Again, I want to thank both of you for stepping forward. This is a, this is not an easy, an easy position. So. Hearing all the interests, why don't we go down the line? Is there a nomination for MRPC?
Nominate Matthew Brenner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none? So Matthew Brenner for MRPC, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now for the MJTC, is there, is there a nomination for the MJTC? If Mr. Brenner wanted to take on both of those positions, it would speed up your, your learning curve.
Well, I just want to, I just want to point out that right now during COVID, they're meeting Wednesdays at 2:30. I don't know if that's an issue for you. The MJTC. So I just want to point that out. I don't know what your work schedule is, but just want to make you aware of that.
Interesting. Okay.
At the time, my schedule's flexible. And I actually have to defer somewhat to the wisdom of the group of, I, I would be interested in taking that role, but by the same token, is that me stepping up too much? And I don't mean for propriety's sake. I mean for actually being productive sake, sake.
I've served, I served on the MPO and I've currently been serving on the MRPC. The MRPC really is more of hearing what's going on with the organization, asking questions about decisions that are being made. And the MJTC is an advisory board to the MPO. And what you're doing there is there's what's called the Transportation Improvement Plan. And that's the money that is spent on roadways throughout the region. And so the MJTC is specifically focused on that. And they're looking at transportation issues and funding issues and where funding is going to go. So it's really two different. One is more oversight and the other is focused on specifically transportation.
And a lot, there's not a lot of homework for MRPC.
No.
And MJTC, there is some homework, but most of it is going to be discussion at the meeting. They'll send you stuff to review and then there'll be a presentation about it at the meeting and you discuss sort of what's happening and, and what the merits of each are, correct, Paula?
Exactly.
That, that's how the groups I've worked on in, in the same capacity have been before.
I'd be willing to step into that role.
Okay, very good.
I would nominate Matthew Brennan for MJTC.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. We'll roll call. All in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much for your volunteerism. So capital planning. The, is there anybody interested in capital planning?
What exactly is the capital planning?
That, that's the, that's the local group where we take, we take all the requests from department heads for additional funding above and beyond the budget. And we very seldom have enough money to fund all of them. And basically, capital plan's job is to, to rank them. To, well, we interview all the department heads and discuss all their requests. And as a group, we, after we've done the interviews, we, we get together and discuss a ranking. There's a new ranking system that started, I think, we started it last year, but it really was only effective this year. I don't even remember the name of it. Adam, can you help me out?
I, I don't know. I don't remember the, the name of it.
Okay. It, it was, it was some very in-depth with a bunch of numbers assigned for values. Anyways, basically, we, we, the, that group decides on capital projects that, that get funded. Actually, it's a recommendation that goes on to the finance committee. The town manager is almost always, is in those meetings as well.
That, that does sound intriguing to me. That's something that is my background when it comes to schooling, so.
So I would I would like to be a part of that.
Okay.
And that is a three-year appointment?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
All right. Is there anybody else that has interest in it? All right, I will take nominations for capital planning committee.
I would make a motion to appoint Eric Torgensen to capital planning committee.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Excellent. Are there any other nominations for capital planning?
I'd like to nominate Matthew Allison for capital planning.
Okay. Is there a second? I don't hear a second. Okay. So there is Eric Torgerson for capital planning committee. All in favor, roll call, Ms. Nicole? I'm sorry?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And now the open space ad hoc committee. Again, Ms. Bertram has expressed interest in remaining there. Is there anyone else interested in the open space ad hoc committee? Okay, I will take a nomination for the open space ad hoc committee.
I would not I would move to nominate Paula Bertram for the open space ad hoc committee.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. All in favor, roll call, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Ms. Torgerson?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. Stormwater task force. Is there anyone interested in that position?
I would make a motion to appoint Matthew Allison to the stormwater task force.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
TCP building design committee. Mr. Cole has expressed an interest in remain there. Is there anyone else that's interested in that? Hearing none. I will do roll call, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Well, I think we need a motion first. A nominee.
You're right. I will take a motion then, please.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Cole for the for the TCP building design committee.
Excellent. Second, okay, now roll call, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Excellent. Almost done. So at this point, I want to stop and ask if there are any other members that are currently appointed to any other town group? No? Originally, I was not an appointed member of the agricultural commission, and I felt that they needed representation and a voice because they didn't seem to have one. I have been involved with them since they began in 2013. And I I I remember I'm the current chair. I don't I don't think we need the liaison position anymore, but I I would encourage anybody who's involved in another group in town to have a report to the planning board. If that makes sense. But since it's on here and we need an appointment, the agricultural commission lia-
I I want to I want to check, is it actually an appointment or is it a liaison?
It's a liaison. You could decide that you don't need it and not fill it, and it could just disappear at your pleasure. It's not it's not a membership to the committee.
Yeah, since I since I since Mr. Allison's currently on the committee, I think we can keep it as updates on the agenda. But I don't think that we need a liaison.
I don't think that's an incorrect statement.
I would I would tend to agree. I I don't mind being named the liaison, but it the important thing to me is that it comes out in committee reports.
Exactly, exactly. So as long as we keep it on the on the committee reports, we're fine.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? Mr. Cole? Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Bertram?
Yes.
Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Torgerson?
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. So and then we have the question of the MPO membership for our next meeting, maybe?
Yeah, I should have an answer for that.
I think I think you might be right. Adam, I looked it up on the website, and it looks like the planning board representative from Lancaster was appointed by the selectmen, so I think you might be correct.
Okay, I'll I'll double check, but that my understanding has always been that that's selectmen only.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess I guess the the question that begs is, are there currently two members to the MPO from Lunenburg?
I I would have to look if we get two members.
Oh, okay.
Because they're they're meted out, I think sometimes depending on community size. I I I have to look at that.
Right, it does go by community size.
Okay. So I think that we have finalized our board reorganization. I want to thank everybody for volunteering above and beyond your elected positions. Now, we've got public comment. Is there anybody would like to have anything to say that's not involving an addenda item for this evening? No hands, Adam?
There are no hands that I can see.
Okay. So our first appointment is for Common Drive, 68 Elm Street, Common Drive.
Let me unmute you, Brian. Oh, you're unmuted. Look at that.
Okay. Brian Marchetti from McCarty Engineering was here in front of you guys a couple of weeks ago for the Common Drive at 68 Elm Street. And without representing the whole project, this common driveway has been laid out to serve two lots to the rear of the parcel. And the question came up, I guess, why this common driveway doesn't follow the lot line that splits the two lots up along the street frontage? And the reason being for that was the the lot configurations were when we divided this 18-acre parcel up, the original plan was to demo the existing house on the lot, but the house was found to be historical, so we had to rearrange the lot lines to get the required frontage and the distance through the house. And because of that, we had one reduced frontage lot, which is the large parcel in the rear. And because of the goofy configuration, we're serving these two parcels by one common drive. However, the driveway could not follow the lot line. And at the last meeting, it was discussed that the planning board wanted to hear from the building commissioner first before you guys voted to voted on the acceptance of this lot. And Sir Burlingame provided a letter to the board back on July 1st, where he synopsis of his letter states that it was reasonable to allow for the common driveway in this configuration. I know Adam Bernie had spoken with him. I gave him the drawing and provided a quick synopsis or a letter of why we did what we did and why it's laid out this way. And I think primarily because of the the safety for a a 90-degree angle with the driveway coming into Elm Street in this configuration, it would be a lot safer than if we had to follow the lot line and access you know, along the frontage at a at an angle. So I believe you guys do have the letter, and I think this was kind of the last piece you guys were looking for to determine whether this was acceptable to you or not.
Okay, so I think we're all in receipt of the response. I think I had some feedbacks. I think we're all in in we have the letter from the building official. As I recall, the concern was it not meeting the bylaw by starting splitting the lot lines, and I don't feel that this letter actually spoke to that. Just my opinion. There were there were some members who felt fairly strongly about that, so I will open this up for board comment and discussion.
I would, Mr. Share, I would concur with with your comments. He does talk about in the letter, the building official states that the common drive would reduce curb cuts, creating less disturbances to surrounding wetlands, and I would wonder if the engineer could speak specifically to that comment.
Yeah, so it's there's right now, it wouldn't really be reducing you know, curb cuts. There's there are there are two curb cuts along the existing, I guess it would, there are two curb cuts right now that are along the existing frontage that serve that house. One of them is going to be maintained for the existing house that's out there. And then we'd have one curb cut now serving these back lots. So it was brought up, and it was specific in our description to the building commissioner that if we did split the lot line, the angle in which the driveway was meeting Elm Street led for a goofy configuration, which is unsafe, or it's more unsafe than having a perpendicular driveway connection to Elm Street. So that's the reason why we're not following the lot line is this makes for a safer a safer driveway configuration layout.
What about impact to wetlands?
Well, the impact to wetlands here, adding a second driveway would would impact and be a greater impact to the buffer zones back on the northern portion of the parcel. So right now, the common driveway, as it's laid out, does impact 100-foot buffer zone. And the fire truck turning area along the north side is also within the 100-foot buffer zone. If we had to add a second driveway to access that to the back on the western side of the lot line, we would be closer to the wetlands. We we wouldn't be within the wetlands, but we would we would be closer to, if not within, the 50-foot no structure zone with the driveway to access the rear parcel. So there would be a bigger impact to buffer zone.
And moving the driveway to follow the lot line, I understand, as you said, it would be a strange design, but would the impact to the wetlands be greater?
Not realigning the configuration as it meets Elm Street, no. But it does provide not just not just a goofy, it's an uns safer configuration. When you're when you're accessing a driveway at an angle, it reduces the site distances in in one direction.
And I I I can concur with that, that's the favorable way is 90 degrees perpendicular to the road. For safety.
Yeah.
Mr. Cole, are you muted?
Nope, I'm okay.
Okay.
So my issue with this was at the last meeting, Mr. Burn by controls this process. And the language in the bylaw, I think, is pretty clear that if a common driveway cannot be located to split the lot line, then we may make a determination, but it has no reference to impact to wetlands, sightlines, any of that. It's simply saying if you if you can't make it work, then there's an alternative process, but it sounds to me like they can make this work, they just would rather streamline it. And I'd also like to point out that they did the subdivision, they created these. And I know it's technically not a subdivision, but they divided the parcel into these knowing that they would need to develop driveways for these lots. So I feel like we're back and revisiting something after the tap. You know, the fact that the lot line isn't at an angle, that's a lot line that they drew. So from my perspective, made the land division in a more reasonable way than they could have their 90-degree access on the road, or they do the two driveways.
Okay.
But there's nothing preventing us here. We could do two driveways. We could. There's there's nothing here that says we can't do that. This is a less impactful driveway to access these two lots, whether it's whether we run and split that lot line, it'll work. We can make it work. This is just a better layout that makes more sense. It's better designed. And simply because it doesn't straddle the lot line is just something to consider now. This is a safer way to do it. It's a better layout. It makes a lot more sense engineering-wise and safety-wise. You know, and and the town's regulations and your bylaw allows for allows for this type of relief by your approval. You know, and that's what we're here asking for. So I mean, if we had to straddle that lot line, we could do it. It's just not the ideal situation, and there were extenuating circumstances with this subdivision here, which made us have to reconfigure these lot lines. We could just as easily forego the common driveway and put in two driveways. But this is a easier, smarter way to do it because it's less impactful. It is less impactful to wetlands. It's less impactful to their buffer zones, and it just seems to make make more sense all around. We could go with two separate driveways. It just didn't make sense in this situation. We prefer to reduce the impact, reduce the impervious coverage that's out there. These houses are set pretty far back off the roadway, so they're not even visible from the roadway. So it kind of fits with the nature of the neighborhood in this part of Lunenburg. And again, your 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 bylaws do allow for this type of situation where you, as a planning board, can approve a common driver that does not straddle the lot line.
That is true.
You know, and it's and it's and it's not like we're recreating the wheel here. This is something that has been approved in town before. You know, myself, I did it with you guys on Reservoir Road. It was another one that was just recently approved on Reservoir Road that Ross Associates did down the street. Similar situation, it was, you know, I believe in that situation, it was topography. It made for an easier less amount of earthwork, less cut fills to not travel outline. And, you know, it's a similar situation here. We could do it, but there's this is a much safer, a much better layout that, you know, it really whether it deviates for their 30 feet or for 80 feet, it it still does. There's going to be an access and maintenance easement that straddles a driveway that both landowners need to here, too. And, you know, it just it just seems to to make more sense. It seems to to work well. You know, and and again, you were you had asked at the last meeting for us to consult with the building commissioner and you know, and and we did, and he did provide his support for it.
All true.
I just want to point out that I while I appreciate the letter from the building inspector, the building officer, the the problem that I have with it is that the facts that are stated for the reason to grant it are not correct. the facts that are stated for the reason to grant it are not correct. It doesn't create less curb cuts, nor does it decrease the impact to the wetlands.
Right.
Well, it, it significantly decreases the impact to the buffer zones, not to the wetlands themselves, but to the buffer zones to the wetlands.
I think what Ms. Bertram is saying is that not following the lot line.
Right.
Because the part of, the part of the driveway in question is from essentially the existing barn down. And altering that wouldn't change the, the impact. So I think the, the question is about whether following the lot line is the way to go, or having the straight shot is the way to go. I think to the chair's point, the reason the building commissioner didn't address splitting the lot line was because if that was done, this, this meeting, this discussion wouldn't be necessary. And I think that, excuse me, Mr. Marchetti's point that keeping the driveway where it, in the configuration that it is now is safer. And therefore he could do it, but doing it makes it less safe. Whether you accept that as a, a reason to do it is up to you. This is at the bottom of a sag curve and just coming out of a horizontal curve on Elm Street. So generally, you want as square a configuration intersecting the road as possible to be able to have the safest access. But that is up to the board.
And I would like to note too, if I could, where that driveway does intersect Elm Street, there's a, there's a wetland area across the street. So that front part here, this plan doesn't show buffer zones. That driveway entrance is within a buffer zone.
The wetland is on the opposite side of the street?
Yes. And it's, it's the pond.
It, it's easterly of the, easterly of the driveway shown, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, shifting it towards the lot line isn't necessarily going to increase the impact, correct?
No, but not having two individual driveways would reduce the impact. But no, shifting it, coming in at an angle, you're right, coming in at an angle would not change the impact.
Right, that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling, to be perfectly honest with you, is, is, I, I don't think it's, I, I understand your point about it not being safe and it's safer to have it, you know, at the, at the angle that it is. But to, to the point that made by another member, that lot line is configured as you drew it. I don't necessarily have a problem with the common driveway. Where I'm struggling is it appears to me to be feasible to meet the requirements of the bylaw. For a common driveway.
It does, and I want to speak to my being quiet here is because of my experience in being on both sides of this board. What the engineer is saying is, is totally makes sense, as well as what the board members are saying, totally makes sense. They're just, they're, the view is 180 degrees different. So that's, that's my two cents here. The, the 90, the 90 degrees would be safer. Shifting it of 10, possibly 10 degrees, I don't think would make a huge impact. And I, and to speak to some previous comments, a lot of the, a lot of the, the statements made in favor of or regarding keeping it this way, really were not necessarily applicable to the question at hand of it following the lot line at the road.
Do we have any, so I, I, I know that hitting at a 90 degree angle is in fact safer. But as opposed to the angle the lot line's actually hitting at, do we have any data on the actual difference in relative safety? Because where it is a, still hitting at a, a, not what, not right, but a fairly right angle. Do we know what the actual difference is when we're talking about it's safer to be 90? Is it that much safer to be 90 in this instance?
I don't, I don't have a, an actual angle or the, the actual reduction in site distance because of the angle, I don't have that information.
So I, I can speak to the fact that it is the bottom of a sag curve. So you're looking upwards in both directions at oncoming traffic. And the horizontal, the, the horizontal curve that Adam mentioned is westerly of this, so an angle towards that would be beneficial in that regard. So that's, that's the information that I can provide.
Okay.
Shed a little light on the other common driveways we've approved for the benefit of we've had common driveways that we haven't approved that are. So, yeah, I mean, we take it on a case by case basis and, you know, you just have to kind of accept each application on its own merits. And the challenge I have with this particular application is that applicant did the land division themselves, at which point they could have remedied the angle, worked with the land, changed the wetlands, minimized all those impacts, went to division. And it's where the language of the bylaw says if it's not located as determined previous pair, and moreover, it could have been done even better if when the lot lines were shifted in heavier 90 degrees. So I think in this particular case, really trying to limits of what the intent of this bylaw is.
Well, we, we were pretty much forced to align these lot lines where they were. One, because the house was ruled to be historical. And two, because the available frontage we had, this was our way of making this a legal four lot, you know, A and R subdivision. Where we could have slightly made one of the lot lines more perpendicular to the roadway. However, we have a telephone pole and a culvert in that same location, which would have also made us unable to have this driveway follow the lot line. We have obstacles along the frontage and this was the way that we laid it out that made the most sense. And provided us all the required frontage widths that made this a four lot legal land division. So you can see just to the, the west side of the driveway, we have a utility pole. And just to the east side of the driveway, we have the culvert that splits or that discharge of stormwater runoff over land to Lake Well. So if we do straddle that lot line, you know, yes, we could do it, but we're going to be uptight to the utility pole on the eastern side. You know, we'll, we'll have to deal with that. But again, this just makes for a much safer and a much more efficient layout to intersect a driveway with Elm Street.
Can you highlight the lot line? Can you move your cursor over the lot line?
So Adam is steering the cursor right now.
Okay, Adam, can you just?
Yeah, he's correct.
Okay. Okay, so this is the first I'm hearing about the utility pole and the culvert, because that was one of the questions that I had. I'm, I'm struggling with this one because I agree that a shared driveway is better. For me, it's a stormwater issue because the, the less impervious area, the better, in my opinion. From a stormwater runoff perspective and a pollution perspective. You know, the other option is always to use a gravel driveway. But the, so I am in favor of a common driveway. Where I'm struggling is the requirements of the bylaw. But the, the utility pole, which I'm just hearing about is a factor. I don't think that the culvert is because I think shifting it over to that is not going to, is not going to be, you know, that doesn't impact the culvert. And I guess I would look for the expertise of other members about how difficult it is to, to relocate a utility pole.
Oh, it's, it's not difficult, it's just costly.
Okay.
Both time and money.
Yeah.
Those trucks that are parked up in the center of town right now currently by the farmer's market, I think those are the trucks they use to do that with. So yeah, he's tight against the pole. If, if it does angle to configure along the lot line, the radius will be a, a larger radius. It might even be tighter against the pole. It, somebody is not going to be happy to have a driveway they have to swing out around a telephone pole to get in and out of, especially to somebody, so actually. So I mean, it's, it's hit or miss. I mean, I, I, I completely agree with Mr. Cole's point that, that to, to talk, that they kind of created their own hardship. But
But there was a reason for it.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I do.
To beat a dead horse here, the utility pole's been there for how long? Lot longer than the applicants own the property, the culvert's always been there. Like all these points that are being made, oh, well, better for this or this. All that was preexisting conditions. The house has been there since the 1700s. So, you know, when logically in my mind, when somebody buys a piece to develop it, of course, you're going to get into situations with, oh, four lots. If I could just fudge this or fiddle that or, you know, this over here, swing. Of course, but you could also get three lots, not have to deal with the utility pole, not have to deal with the culvert, not have to deal with more impact to the wetlands, you just put a single lot in the back. And I just, the part I struggle with this is that the bylaw is pretty specific that you shall straddle the lot line to that. Ownership here, so that when people buy homes, both half driveway is what you're working with somebody is, they're lying on the sand, so to speak, versus now maintenance easements over other people's property. But all that aside, all condition already there. And I, I just feel like, you know, they can meet the by A, put two driveways in, or B, straddle the lot line. And I just, I don't see of this particular case at alternatives.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but is Tanner Cole breaking up for everyone?
Yes.
Is there anything we can do about that?
I don't know. Am I still breaking up?
No, didn't that time?
Okay, is that better? Oh.
So far so good, thank you.
So should I repeat myself?
I think we got most of it.
I think so.
I did.
Okay, this, this has gone on quite a long time with two meetings. So I guess, I guess we can either ask you to reconfigure it and then bring it back to us, or we can vote on it and you might not get approved, which I'm not quite sure. You'd probably end up reconfiguring it and coming back to us.
Well, I just can't really see how, how this is any different than other ones that you approved in town. I really can't. You're, you're, you're asking me to do something that's providing a driveway for a much more unsafe condition. I, I just can't see the logic in that. I can't see how you can support something like that, asking me to change it where we could come back and follow the lot line. We could do it, but it just doesn't make sense. And you keep going back to, well, you can make three lots and it's, it's our own self-imposed hardship. Well, it's not, we made four legal lots in town. It's four legal buildable lots. And it makes a lot more sense, we're less impacted of the well and these are long driveways. We had to push it up to the back. It's four lots on almost 20 acres. It's not like we're trying to squeeze in multiple lots on a cluster development. It's, it just seems like it makes a lot more sense. And I think it, it meets the character of the neighborhood. There are a lot of long driveways in Lunenburg. You know, the land is set way back, the houses are way back off the roadway. And it just, it makes sense, we're not asking for this for a reason that, you know, is, is out of bounds, is something that's not heard of before. It's, it makes sense and it's a safer configuration. There's just, there's no other way to look at it besides that. We could come back straddling that lot line, it just, it doesn't make sense. As an engineer, as somebody who lays this type of stuff out, you know, with the grading, we've, we've been through conservation, we've reviewed all this, we checked the grading. It makes sense to lay it out like this, it really does. I could come back and follow that lot line and it just doesn't make any sense. I'm doing something that's counterintuitive to my training, to my education, to what I've been doing. I've been doing this for almost 20 years. It just doesn't make sense, it really doesn't. And I can't, I can't see how you can, you could, you could support an, a layout of a driveway that's less safe than something that is very easy to do, completely makes sense. And it is kind of similar to multiple ones that you've already approved. There's, there's just, there's, what's the trigger of, what's one more hardship that would make this okay? As opposed to, you know, site safety and, and, you know, quite frankly, the obstacles at the, at the frontage. They're, they're legal lots, it makes sense. It's not like we're trying to, you know, cram a whole bunch of these into a small, tiny development.
Mr. Chairman? I, I just want to comment on the fact that we have not always approved common driveways and there have been
You always approved, I'm just saying, previous ones that have been approved.
Okay, and I just want to point out, when we look at cases in which we approve common driveways, they're typically not feasible due to topography constraints or direct impact to wetlands. But there's typically a, a very compelling reason for us to approve it. And we do try in every instance to meet as much as the majority of the bylaw as we can. And in this case, where I think all of us are struggling is that this can meet the bylaw. And in fact, the, the, the lot line could be shifted in such a way to, to make it more safe. So, you know, and as Mr. Cole mentioned, I mean, this is to maximize development of this parcel. It is, it, it, that's the bottom line. And, and I agree completely with the, with the thought process of the bylaw to place a common drive straddling the lot line so that ownership is equal versus easements and, and on other people's land. So, you know, I, to be perfectly honest with you, I hear what you're saying about the safety aspect and I, and I hear what you're saying about the utility pole, but these are hardships that are self-induced. They're not, they're not triggered by the land itself and obstacles that can't be overcome.
I would, go ahead.
It's just clarification. If he chooses to straddle the lot line, he's not coming back to the board. Because at that point, he meets the bylaw.
If he agrees to it at this meeting, then I don't see any reason he would need to, if I'm correct on that, Adam. Adam Burney?
Yeah, I was, I was muted, sorry. I was talking and no sound was coming out. It, it doesn't matter, you could deny him and he could split the lot line and he doesn't need to come back. You could ask him to fix it, he could say, great, I'm going to fix it. And he, if, if he splits the lot line for the length of it, he, there's, it's a by right. It's a by right construction by the, by the bylaw.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that for Mr. Marchetti because he was referencing redesigning it and then coming back. And I just wanted to make sure he was clear that if he splits the lot line, then he doesn't need our approval. So that's all.
It's a good point.
All right, well, I guess, I guess it's pretty clear that you want that split the lot line. So I guess that's really no other choice for, for us. So then doing so, I guess informally, Adam, I'd still submit a plan to you, just so you can see what we did.
You're certainly welcome to, I mean, it, it would at that point just be a driveway permit to the building commissioner as part of your You're certainly welcome to, I mean, it would at that point just be a driveway permit through the building commissioner, uh, as part of your building permit applications. Uh, I, and you know, I always like to get emails from you, Brian, so if you want to send me a plan, I can I can send it around to the rest of the board so they can see how it how it looks after the the meeting, the bylaw.
Now, we still have the easement, correct? So the easement, we still straddle the full length.
Correct.
Just from my own knowledge now, while I have you guys here. Uh, you know, just call it fifty feet in from the edge of the road, how we have an angle and back an angle back. If the driveway conforms to that, but it's off a foot or two to make these angles a little more you know, I mean, the easement, it's all, the driveway will be one hundred percent within the easement, which will be fifteen feet off each side of that lot line. Um, as long as the driveway still follows the lot line and lot lines within it, is there any type of deviation I'd have to try to just smooth up these curves in a driveway?
All the bylaw says is that said driveway shall be located through the frontage or access strip of both lots equally. Including lots with reduced frontage.
So basically, just take the lot line offset at fifteen feet both sides at the frontage and then make a nice smooth transition to the driveway that's already shown, and I believe that would be entirely appropriate.
So at the frontage, just at
Yeah, and and ultimately, uh, Brian, that's the call of the building commissioner, whether he'll approve that driveway permit or not. Um, and and I think if it's a, you know, I'm assuming you're gonna go sixteen or or so feet with with two homes on it. And it's, you know, ten on one side and six on the other for a small portion, I don't know that he's going to quibble with that, but I can't speak for him.
Right. Well, then that's, uh, I guess that's what we'll do, we'll withdraw this plan and I'll I'll, uh, redraw it to straddle the lot line at the frontage.
I appreciate it, Brian, and I and I must apologize, uh, there's been many, not just this meeting and not to single you out, but there have been many references to, it makes sense, it makes sense, it makes sense, but we're enforcing our bylaws, and I'm sure you've read them. And I'm sure that there are plenty of instances, they don't make sense.
Yep, there's, it's not, not my first rodeo, I hear you.
Exactly, thank you very much.
I, hold on, I I would ask, you're you're formally gonna withdraw this, Brian?
Yes.
Uh, if the board would, uh, motion and vote on accepting that withdrawal, please?
Um, okay, well, I guess I need a motion to accept and then second, and then we can vote on.
It needs to be the three members who, look, Paul, you muted yourself.
Sorry, I have a lot going on in the house, so I'm trying not to drive you guys nuts. Um, I would make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the common driveway application for sixty-eight Elm Street.
I'd second.
Excellent, um, so, uh, and this is only a vote between the three of us, Adam?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you and sorry, Mr. Marchetti.
And Brian, if you would just send me a a quick letter that just says we're requesting a withdrawal so I can stick it in the file.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right.
So, we're on to our next item?
That's correct.
Excellent. Jacey, I must apologize for that lengthy, uh, you've been here more than an hour, I apologize for that. Uh, we, uh, we do have, uh, the next thing is an economic development committee appointments. Um, in our packets, we received two talent bank forms for specifically the economic development committee. The charge is the first page, and then, uh, Kathy Clark is the sec, is Jace, Jace, Jace Lynn Nickel. Hi, Jace. Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, so I think that you may be, I don't know if Kathy Clark is also on?
She is.
She is, excellent, can we hear Ms. Clark?
Uh, I believe I did unmute her. Can you hear us, Kathy? Uh, you're not coming through with any volume, you're showing as unmuted, I don't know if your microphone is off.
After an hour, she may have stepped away.
No, she, I, I, we, we can see her and she's talking, but we can't hear her say anything. Nope, still nothing, Kathy.
Kathy, you might be able to call using the phone number and use your phone audio. Uh, she's asking for the number.
It is uh, eight eight eight, four seven five, four four nine nine.
Okay, and just to review this appointment, um, there are, um, there are two members, residents of Lunenburg, uh, appointed, um, by planning board. There is one each from agricultural commission, open space and conservation commission. Uh, where those three groups will make a recommendation for appointment to this group. Um, and just for a little background, Jacey's, uh, talent bank form, I believe, has been submitted since January. And, um, and I tried to get her, uh, I tried to get her interviewed by the agricultural commission. And that took a, quite a while, uh, since we didn't meet between February and June. And when we did meet in June, we had two new members and we decided that we could probably get uh, an appointment that was an agricultural business owner. So, um, in order to expedite the process for Jacey, uh, I suggested that we just appoint her through the planning board. And we're still waiting for Kathy Clark to join us? Or will you join us?
Uh, she's still here.
Okay.
Can you hear him?
Nope, and she's gone.
Okay, no, she's there. Call the phone number.
Oh, there she is, I had to, everyone shuffled around.
Well, while we're waiting for Kathy, Mr. Chair, maybe Jess, Jesselyn can go over her qualifications, Kathy, if you could call in with the phone number.
Sure, well, honestly, the only qualification is that she owns a business.
Want to hear a little bit from her about why she's included in the economic development committee and and what she sees as you know, important and a little bit about her background.
Excellent, you have the floor.
So I'm Jacey, also known as Jacqueline, Jace Lynn Nickel, um, owner with my husband and Smokestack Roasters. Um, I appreciate your consideration, um, of the position, I'm happy to contribute in any way that I can. I'm not really entirely one hundred percent sure of all the duties that are involved, but I'm happy to jump in. Um, one thing I found during this whole pandemic thing is that this community really wants to support local and see local small businesses succeed. We've heard an outpouring of support as far as, you know, how are you guys doing, can we maintain, are you gonna make it through? And I think it's really critical at this time to keep, you know, businesses, you know, in place, and especially having been through the process of starting a new business in Lunenburg last year, I want to help new business owners that are coming to the community, um, in any way that I can. I have a good background in, um, software, uh, asset management and IT procurement, I know those aren't applicable here. Um, I did go to school for paralegal initially, um, I have some good experience in contract law. Um, I'm dynamited Excel, so if there's any spreadsheets you can help with, I'm honored to help in any way that I can, essentially. Thanks for considering.
Well, thank you for um, are there any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, um, I do just want to point out, though, that you mentioned the only the only qualification is to own a business, and according to the to the char, the charge of the economic development committee, there are two members that are residents of Lunenburg, one is a two-year term and one is a one-year term. And then there are ex officio members, which is a Lunenburg business owner. So the two citizens at large do not necessarily have to be business owners, I just want to point that out. Um, I think it makes sense, but it's not a requirement. Um, and the other one question I do have, uh, Jace Lynn, is are you interested in the two-year or the one-year term?
I think one year makes sense, considering I'm not sure what the duties entail. So initially, one year is a good, I want to sign up for the minimum and then hopefully exceed and maybe we'll move on to two years.
Okay, Kathy, can we hear you yet?
I hope so.
Thank you.
Okay, my apologies, iPhone and technology, just sometimes not always the best.
So can, so can you provide some background as well?
Sure, um, I kind of missed some of that, but, um, a little bit about my background, I think I kind of itemized a little bit on the talent form. I've owned a business in town since two thousand fifteen. Uh, my business is just online now, um, and it has been for a couple of years. However, I do rent spaces still for the R City family. Um, and those spaces are largely at the Village, and then, of course, the Dragonfly Building too. I've always had an interest in trying to see more business come to town, which initiated conversations um, a few years back in terms of, uh, with Heather and and previous to that, I think even with Carrie, about how that can happen. Um, I did actually start a little Lunenburg Business Network prior to the inception of the, um, Lunenburg Business Association and and tried to help with the initiation of that by uh, kind of corresponding with Tefl and Townsend and their business associations. So I've always had an interest in, you know, just seeing more business come to town and, um, so that it helps our whole community.
And would you be interested in the two-year term?
I would, I'm not going anywhere.
Well, I want to thank you both for coming forward. Um, and I would make a motion to appoint, how do you pronounce your name, is it Jasselyn or Jacqueline?
You can call me Jacey for short.
Okay, I would make a point, uh, a motion to appoint Jacey Nickel and Kathy Clark to the Economic Development Committee.
Uh, for the one year and the two-year respectively?
Respectively, yes.
And I would second that.
Um, is there any further discussion? I, that's the first time I've asked that, and I probably should have asked it earlier, but hearing none, um, we'll do roll call, all in, all in favor, uh, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
Apologies for that, excellent, um. Well, thank you both for stepping up and, uh, I look forward to, um, working with you. Uh, I don't know if it can start meeting yet without having a third non-ex officio, can they, Adam?
I guess in theory we could, I don't know that it would, uh, since the ex officio members can't vote. Um, there wouldn't be a lot getting done, because there wouldn't be a quorum for voting.
Who has not yet appointed from the, from the various town committees?
Concom and, uh, Open Space. And my understanding is after your next agenda item, uh, Open Space will have a full complement, and the chair said he would like to call a meeting and, uh, work on that, that item.
Awesome, okay, great.
So Only the chair of Ag would get them to do it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry?
I said, if only the chair of Ag would put a, put a rep forward.
We are working on it, we are working on it, um, so, uh, excellent, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other ex officio member, there there's Tom Alonso from the Board of Selectmen and I believe Paul Bertram from the Planning Board.
That's correct.
Um, and I don't believe there's any reason that you couldn't get together now and have a conversation about when might be a good time to, um, like times and dates and places, maybe? Or probably
Let me, let me, let me reach out to Brandon, um, and see when he's thinking of holding the Open Space meeting. I think, you know, if we've set a meeting date and time and then the, and the new rep from the Open Space it's gonna kind of, we're gonna have to redo it. So if we can get the Open Space Committee to call a meeting in the very near future, I think it might make sense to wait, but if we keep and I would grieve wholeheartedly, then it would make sense to get together.
Okay, and and as long as we get the Zoom meeting credentials before noon tomorrow, I can submit the agenda for our meeting on Thursday for the Agricultural Commission. Um, and there were some, some good ideas about recommendations, and I'm not sure if we've actually got anybody to step forward, I know there's no talent bank form. So, uh, I I I would assume that if we, we did have some interested parties, that we could interview them, make a recommendation, and then if the talent bank form is later received, then hear that at the next planning meeting?
Yeah, and you know, I mean, I think a talent bank form is is a formality if someone steps forward in a meeting and says they would like to do it. Uh, I think with the folks that we have in the room, uh, that was a way for them to signify interest, but if you have somebody who's actively seeking it uh, at a meeting, I think that would be, you know, a formality after the AgCom makes their recommendation.
Excellent, super. Um, and, uh, Conservation is meeting tomorrow, I haven't seen it on their agenda, I reached out to Matt Morrow and, uh, I believe it's Bob Pease is the chair now?
He is.
And I, that probably wasn't in time for them to get it on the agenda, I haven't heard back from either one of them. Um, I I I can't speak for them at all, um, but I I did look through their agendas, it hasn't been on their, um, agenda. Also, I've been watching the Board of Selectment meetings and, um, this has not been mentioned as far as I can tell. At all, as far as vacancies or, um, even existing.
I will follow up with the town manager on that.
I would appreciate that, thank you. Um, all right, so, again, thank you very much for the Economic Development Committee, uh, volunteers. And our next, uh, item is, uh, applicants for the Open Space Committee. Um, we've got their talent bank forms, um.
Do.
Are they with us?
Uh, they are.
Hello?
Hello?
Was that Lynn Mann?
That would be me.
Excellent. And then, Michael Tohill?
Tohill, yes, I'm here.
Excellent, excellent, welcome, thank you for, uh, stepping up, appreciate it. I did have, uh, conversation with the chair, uh, of Open Space, and he did uh, recommend both of these people, and as has been spoken, they have not been able to meet to, um, make a recommendation, but I think that, um, I think the recommendation from the chair is more than adequate, if everyone else would agree with that.
I I would agree, but similar to the Economic Development Committee, I would like to hear from both applicants about a little bit about their background and why they're interested. Lynn, on your talent bank form, it said see attached or see background, but unfortunately, the background didn't come through in our packet, so I was wondering if you could just highlight some of the things you wanted us to know.
Oh, I don't even remember, it's been so long ago, I don't remember what I put down, but my background basically is in public health. It's not in any kind of planning or, and I don't have the government experience, but I do feel like my background in public health and knowing how important town governments and local governments are on community-based health is what has kind of motivated me to want to become involved in some way in the community and in the government. So, um, I'm also, I was, I've been very impressed with the work that Matt Kibbe and the committee has done in terms of acquiring the space on Northfield Road and the, um, Open Space Plan. And I've seen what some other communities have done in these areas, and they all seem to me to be related to um, a healthy community. So, basically, my, I have a lot of experience with, um, program planning, doing, um, health and sort of human service-type program plans, and with, most recently, probably for the last ten years, in evaluation. Um, I've written a ton of grants, grant proposals, and I've been funded for things, so I do know how to write grant proposals. Yeah, that's probably the most important stuff.
Great, well, thank you. And Michael, did you want to comment on your background a little bit, it looks like you have a a strong environmental science background.
Yeah, I, um, have about forty years' experience as an ecologist, um, working with communities, working with the state, working on open space plans, um, doing a lot of permitting for projects. And I also have been working with the towns on, several towns on putting grants together and and getting funding for open space and for conservation restrictions, conservation easements on property. So I've just always been very interested in this area, I I tend to like to go out and do a lot of hikes and uh, enjoy the open space, walk around, especially at this space, walk around, especially at this time. It's great to be out and about. And so I'm looking forward to being able to serve the town in this capacity.
Great. Well, thank you.
Excellent. And do either applicant have anything additional they'd like to say?
I love hiking, too. I've been to all the areas in Lunenburg and beyond.
Excellent. That should be a prerequisite as well.
It should, yeah.
Okay, any further questions or comments from the board?
I would make a motion to appoint Lynn Mann and Michael Tohill to the Open Space Committee.
Is there a second? Is that a second? Yes, excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. Well, thank you very much for stepping forward, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to it, too.
So has Brandon scheduled the next meeting yet, or is it still in?
I think he was waiting to see what happened tonight to schedule it, so I will reach out to him in the morning and let him know that the two have been appointed, and I'm sure he'll reach out to the group looking to set something up.
Excellent.
And could you let him know that, you know, we'd like to meet as soon as possible? So I'm sorry, we want you to meet as soon as possible with the Economic Development.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. So I think that rounds out this agenda item. Next on our agenda, and again, thank you very much. I don't know if they're still on, but so minutes approval. We've got 6:22:20 for the regular meeting, and 6:22:20 for the 190 Electric Avenue.
I would make a motion to approve the June 22, 2020 minutes.
We've also discussed this before, is new members are eligible to acknowledge or vote on minutes that they weren't active on. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay. So if you don't feel comfortable, you can abstain, or you can vote. So there was a motion. Was there a second?
Yes, second.
So all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Abstain.
Mr. Torgerson? Okay, very good.
And Mr. Chair, an aye from you?
Yes, an aye from me. Thank you. Thank you. So then there's the 190 Electric Ave?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of June 22, 2020 for 190 Electric Avenue.
Second, okay? Any discussion? All in favor, roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Abstain.
Mr. Torgerson?
Abstain.
And an aye for myself. Thank you. Moving right along, committee reports is back on our agenda. Capital Planning has not met since the end of last year. Season was over, so I believe they'll resume September, October-ish. Stormwater Task Force has not met since January or February. And honestly, I'm not quite sure that we have another meeting scheduled. But as was stated earlier in the description of the Stormwater Task Force, it is primarily providing guidance for our consultants and the staff to continue conforming to our permit. So I hope that they will be meeting soon. I also did hear that Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Todd Dwyer for the Board of Selectmen, was appointed to Philis's position there. And that currently is a three-member board. Oh, and I don't, I'm still on it, so I don't need to tell anybody about it. The Agricultural Commission, we finally did meet. We went between February and June. Our last meeting was June 16. Our next, no, our last meeting was June 18. Our next meeting is July 16, this Thursday. Hopefully, I can get the information I need to submit, the agenda, because it does need to be advertised. So if I can't get it in tomorrow, we won't have that meeting this Thursday. But the farmer's market started on May 31. There have been between 12 and 16, I think, vendors every Sunday. It's held 10 to 1 at the center of town in front of the Ritter Building. It's been a very good turnout. We still have all kinds of overriding regulations from the Shoba Board of Health dictating operation and activities, and it's, we're not supposed to touch items. The vendors are supposed to pass them to the person who's purchasing them. It's all roped off, supposed to have one-way circular pattern through the market. There has been nothing but positive feedback. Everybody has been very happy to be able to go. The vendors and the attendees likewise, everybody has been very happy with it. And that's pretty much the extent of my report for the AgCon. TC Building Design Committee, TCP, I'm sorry. Mr. Cole?
The next meeting is July 29. We are in the process of engineering that project. The goal would be to have the engineering done fall. That's a little bit aggressive, given the coronavirus limited access to the building. So we'll see how that pans out. One issue that the project will face is if we do make it to fall town meeting, in all likelihood, the project won't through our budget. Hence, we would need an override, which would need to be put on a ballot, so then a special election? Or do you simply wait till spring town meeting and the spring election and put it on the ballot then? So got some issues to sort through, but one day at a time.
Very good. And is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Then Open Space AdHoc?
We haven't met. MRPC, I do have a couple updates. The Committee met in June. Couple things that are of interest to Lunenburg is the Lunenburg Conservation Commission received a grant to create and install maps of the intersection of the trails on various properties. And so MRPC is working on creating a series of You Are Here maps, and they're working with the town to discuss the specifics of the maps. The, they're currently, and MRPC is currently in the process of finalizing a mobile application that will allow communities to update trail data live from mobile phones. They are looking to have it tested internally when the COVID restrictions have been lifted. They're working on starting community outreach and training on the app. This project is going to be ongoing through the spring. The, the MRPC is in the process of migrating their physical server to the Office 365 cloud, so that there is a lot going on with that. But they believe it will be, it will initially cost approximately $1,500 in setup, but actually will save over $300 a month in vendor subscription costs. So they're looking forward to enhanced functionality within Office 365. And that's it.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's it.
And we have no representative for MJTC current, well, we do now, but we didn't for previous to this meeting. So moving on to the next item is Director's Items, 190 Electric Avenue update.
So we have retained the services of Christopher Environmental Associates to be the third-party monitor for the project on 190 Electric. Those of you who were involved in the Settlers Project will remember that he is, he is actually still currently our third-party monitor for that site. He has bags of experience in environmental monitoring, and a fair amount in solar specifically. He's done a great job over at Northfield Road. It was a challenging site. This site is a little less challenging, but it will be good to have him out there. And then the Stormwater Bylaw. So you have a copy of the updated Stormwater Bylaw after our conversation with Nick Christofori of Comprehensive Environmental. He did make the changes that we talked about. And so they are, they are in blue, and they start on the 1, 2, 3, on the fifth sheet on the front of that, where it gets into the standards, number 2. So for the new members, currently, we have a Stormwater Bylaw that requires that when a developer is disturbing more than an acre of land, disturbance is essentially churning the ground, they are required to obtain a stormwater permit. This is a requirement of the original Phase 2 permit from 2003, and continues through to the current iteration, and we're required to update it to meet the language in the new permit. So we've been going back and forth with our consultant on dialing in the Bylaw. We're actually in pretty good shape. Our Bylaw has, was pretty good to start with, and just needs to meet the new requirements. Ultimately, the big questions came in response to how the language in the Bylaw references the state's stormwater management policy or handbook, which says a lot of things that many engineers don't do, because from a practical perspective, they're not necessary or relevant in all cases. And we had an incident recently where there was a stormwater basin that was designed without monitoring well, that the stormwater standards require by the letter of them. But both the design engineer and our review engineer looked at it and said, yeah, no one does that, because if it's not absolutely impeccably maintained, it creates conduit for potentially contaminated water to have a channel directly to the groundwater. So a lot of the discussion was how do we reference meeting the intent of the policy without requiring strict adherence to the letter of it? And what you'll see is that the language was changed to remove, to meet the standards of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy to following stormwater standards, and then specifically listing out what those are. And I think C would be of particular note, where it's not taking the requirements, it's the intent and guidance provided by the latest handbook and per industry standard methods. While design should be completed per the Stormwater Handbook, specifications to the fullest extent possible, the PGA reserves the right to waive and/or modify minor disparities between the design and the Stormwater Handbook on a project-specific basis. So Ms. Bertram, I think, had some of the larger concerns around this. I think they were shared by the other two members, but is this sort of what meets what you were kind of looking for from the language?
Yeah, I mean, my, just to provide some background, my concern was that we had several projects come before us, that our existing regulations stated that projects shall meet the standards in the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy. And we had several projects come forward that didn't meet the standards. And some types of examples are typically, you need to have three boring holes within a detention basin. They have to be a minimum of 20 feet deep, et cetera. And we had received plans which did not comply with those policies. And my issue is, is if we have a regulation that says you shall meet the standards, you need to meet the standards. If we want to waive that, and we did talk with the reviewing engineer as well as the design engineer, and there are more cases in which the standards weren't met to the letter of the policy, and the response from the various engineers was that this was in line and in accordance with accepted engineering practices. So the question is whether or not this board wants to require adherence to Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy, or whether we want to reserve the right to waive and/or modify disparities. And one question I do have, Adam, is that, is that within our power?
I, well, I think by this language, it would be within your power.
But under the Massachusetts Stand Water Handbook, I mean, is adherence required by state regulation?
No.
Okay.
My understanding is that it is a guidance document that outlines the standards, and in some instances, common sense and practical engineering practices take precedent, especially in instances where methods have evolved over the time since the handbook was implemented. Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but that's, my understanding has always been that it's not a, it's not a statutory document that requires strict adherence, like Mass General Law or something to that effect. It's more a document that was developed by DEP. If it were required, it would probably be codified in the CMRs, and it's not.
My understanding is that you're correct. It did originally come out as a policy, I believe, at the end of the 90s, and it's turned into the handbook, which I believe is still a policy. However, it is written into the majority of the towns, because the stormwater, the guidance from the state listed it that way, and almost everybody did it that way. So it's so facto, it is a regulation.
But it's better, it's easier than developing your own standards, is why everyone adopted it.
Right.
Like, we're developing our own standards here now, with the language stricken, that meet the following, and we've got D, E, we've got less than a page, and the handbook is three volumes, and it comprises four or five inches thick worth of paperwork. So we might be selling ourselves short by getting rid of that, just because of monitoring laws.
Well, I think the language that's in here comes directly from the permit, the Phase 2, the MS4 permit. So this is the standards that they're requiring within that. And I think that by having C read the way that it does, you're still requiring conformance with the handbook, but allowing the board to look at it and say, okay, well, I see that it says you have to have this monitoring. Well, we understand that that's not something we want, because if you don't maintain it, then we have a bigger problem than if you have it. And so, and again, I think with the borings, we're talking about stuff like modeling and soil evaluation, which I don't think was always considered when it was originally put together.
My concern, however, I understand what you're saying, but my concern is similar to what the Chair just stated, is by calling out specific things that must be adhered to and that can't be waived. And as was noted, it's a three-volume handbook. I'm uncomfortable with calling out just those few items versus, and I would personally like to see, have the opportunity to go back and see what other items within the handbook I would want to make sure was complied with, or striking the restrictions, striking the specific items and simply stating C is that you have to meet it to the greatest extent possible, and the Planning Board reserves the right to waive and/or modify minor disparities. But I have a problem with calling out just a couple of specifics that can't be waived.
I don't think I was clear. D, E, F are not items from the handbook. Those are items from the MS4 permit. Those are requirements that we're required to implement per Those are requirements that we're required to implement per our compliance with the EPA slash DEP permit.
Okay, so the A, B, D, A, B, D are coming from, okay, and then that next page, one?
A, B, D, E, and F are all coming from the Phase Two permit as it was issued in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, so that wording has to be included.
Correct. So if you look at, um, if we look at D, that's a super good one because it, what it does is D requires that, ninety percent of TSS be removed on new development and sixty percent on redevelopment. Currently, the Stormwater Handbook calls for eighty-five percent on new development and as much as practicable on redevelopment. So this actually makes a stricter requirement than the handbook, but it's mandated by EPA through the permit. So that's why it's in there because that standard isn't in the handbook, same as, as the other language that's in there. It's not language from the handbook, it's language from the permit.
Okay.
I, I did understand what you said initially, Adam, and I like the fact that C, um, gives us that beautiful amount of wiggle room. However, the, what was it? The low-impact design. Okay, so the LID must be im- mass implemented if practicable. So then we've got that word again, that practicable word is, is used, you can't enforce it.
It is a legal term of art, though.
I know, but I'm not that artful. Like, and this, this is a black and white document. But, I mean, and, and that's just my opinion, but, um, I mean, we've tried to, we've tried to enforce low-impact development on, on, on at least one site and it's been blatantly refused. Now, we're going from eighty-five to ninety. This is above and beyond the, um, the current requirements. It's even more important that we make it very clear that we don't want all these mechanical separators. Not mechanical, uh, the board sentries and the sep- the, the sediment separator. We don't, we don't have a back truck. We can't, we can't keep taking them on. We're going to eventually have to have one. But anyways, done there yet.
I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, but I think what we've got to do, personally, I'd like to see us looking at a low-impact development bylaw.
Yes.
I think that's something we should, we should start working on. I don't know how the other members feel, but that's something I would be in favor of doing. And then that would supersede this. But right now, I, I don't know that we have a lot of options because we don't have a low-impact development bylaw.
Very, very true.
But the practicable becomes more enforceable once you have the bylaw.
Right. So one more question for Adam is, um, so we're, we're in our second year of the permit and, uh, are there going to be additional things that we need to add to this in future years?
No.
Okay, that was, I was just making sure we're not going to have to an- annually update this as well.
No, not, not unless you decide that you want to, uh, dial it in more and be more specific about tiering what you want to control and, and that kind of stuff, but, um, that, that's a, a much larger conversation. But it, it's not required, no. It would be an individual choice for the community.
Excellent.
I don't know if the, if the new members have had an opportunity to review this bylaw and, and if they have any questions or if you prefer that we wait on this and table it to another meeting or what are your thoughts?
I have had the time to review it. I don't yet have the expertise, I didn't have enough time to review it and develop enough expertise to fully comprehend, uh, the, the impact of everything in this. So if the, uh, if the move tonight is to accept or not, I would rather take time to understand and get more up to speed, but I also understand that there's people here who have a lot more experience with it and there's things that may be very readily apparent that I just don't get.
And ultimately, this is going to be for fall town meeting, so, you know, uh, i- if you want to give the other members time to catch up on it, it, it sounds like three members who have been involved in it from, you know, the winter are satisfied with it and then we can come back and answer questions and have further discussion about it if there's additional prior to, uh, putting it on the warrant for the fall.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I mean, we've got plenty of time. The more buy-in, the better. More support, the better. So, um, the update, um, thank Mr. Christofori for the, um, is it Mr. Christofori?
Yes, it is.
Okay. For the, uh, for the input, last meeting was great. So we want to put this on for our next meeting? Or do we want to give it two meetings?
Oh, yeah, I would give a couple of meetings. There's a lot to digest.
That's fine. I mean, we can put it on for some time in August.
Well, we could, we could put it on all the meetings between now and then and if, it was, right. If there was questions, then we could actually discuss and deliberate.
Yeah, we'll just put it on and, and we'll put it on in the, um, in, in the, uh, ongoing items.
Sure. Do we have ongoing items?
We can.
There you go. Getting bigger and bigger all the time. Excellent. So, uh, if, and does anybody else have anything else to add to that? We're going to leave it on the agenda and give the new members time to, um, digest and, and get acquainted with it and, and, uh, and by being on the agenda, that gives us the, the ability to deliberate it at any meeting. Right? All right, well, hearing no, no dissent. Thank you for the input and, um, I think we'll have a very good, uh, we'll have a very good product for the fall meeting, town meeting. So the next on our agenda is our meeting schedule. They're all not held at Town Hall and we start at six-thirty, uh, unless there's technical difficulties and, or lack of quorum. Now that we've got a full board, there shouldn't be that problem. Our next meeting is July twenty-seventh. And we apparently have a scenic road hearing for that.
That's great. Yep.
And, um, anything else that you're aware of at this point right now?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Very good. So July twenty-seventh, we typically meet the second and fourth Tuesday, uh, Monday. So have you got anything to add to that, Adam?
I do not.
Excellent. Um, is there any public with us?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, the public I see is required to be here, so, huh, thank you for having, for allowing us to, to do this. I appreciate the technical support. So are there any board comments or concerns?
No.
This is going to sound picky, but can I just ask a favor when referring to me if you could call me Mrs. Bertram instead of Ms.?
Of course.
After thirty-five years of marriage, I think I'm entitled to that Mrs., so.
Okay, not a problem. I will make a note.
Thank you.
Mrs. Paula Bertram. Very good. Um, yeah, English was not my strong suit. I'm math and science guy.
Well, most women prefer the Ms., but I actually am pretty proud of my marriage, my longstanding marriage and pretty happy with it, so.
Yeah, I, I've watched, I've watched it flourish.
You did, you did.
Um, I, I would like to, uh, to take this last opportunity to thank our two new members for stepping forward. Uh, and, and comment also on the, the right, the write-in campaign was amazing. Uh, we had, we had a ballot with, uh, twenty-one positions and six names on the ballot. Through the efforts of some local citizens, uh, we were able to get two contested positions as the write-in campaign. And, uh, again, I appreciate your efforts and, um, and I welcome you to the group. And, um, again, please, if you ever have any question about what we're talking about, we, sometimes we, we talk fast and loose and we've been involved with this for a while. Then, um, if, if there's stuff that you don't understand, it's important that you ask. That's all.
Absolutely.
So i- i- does anybody else have anything else to say?
I would just echo the sentiments of the chair and thank you both for coming forward and looking forward to working with you.
Well, thank you much for the kind welcome.
Very good. So this is the time of the evening where, um, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? I heard it. I'm not quite sure who said it.
Tanner did.
Okay, very good. Marjorie's still writing minutes, right?
Yes.
Yes, it's important. Um, excellent. Uh, there's, assuming no further discussion about adjournings, then, um, I will roll call vote. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Ms. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Torgerson?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent, excellent meeting. Thank everyone involved and, um, we'll see you on the twenty-seventh.